This case on the docket is School Board of Volusia County versus Academies of Excellence, Inc.
May I, sir?
May I please report? My name is Theodore Adorn. I am the attorney representing the School Board of Volusia County, Florida. In this proceeding, we have the current ... I would like to reserve, or reserve rather, ten minutes of time to, for rebuttal to the appellate's argument.
Let me ask you a question to begin with. You have three main arguments set forth in your brief. Which of those three arguments were raised below to the trial court?
Well, Arguments one and two were raised. There isn't a trial court, per se. The school board is the quasi-judicial hearing agency. Certainly, all of the arguments raised were raised below.
The constitutionality argument was raised below?
No, it was not raised. The school board has no jurisdiction to declare statute unconstitutional, and the case law clearly provides for us to raise this question in this forum under these circumstances, and this court does have jurisdiction to consider that.
Okay, the first argument relates to erring and conducting a de novo review, correct?
Yes, sir.
And one of the arguments is it deviated by creating its own record during the appeal process, rather than just reviewing what had happened below, is that correct?
Yes, I think if you read the record, what you'll find, and for purposes of discussion, the state board adopted in total, with the exception of one bit of live testimony, everything that the appellate commission had done below. So, for purposes of discussion, they're one in the same in terms of their votes. But what happened at the appellate commission level, the Charter School Commission Appeals, we ended up with a discussion that probably should have taken place at the school board level, where they were attempting to alter their record, which effectively was the application itself, by saying, "Well, we're not sure that the provisions contained in the application are actually what we meant." And in fact, it's undisputed, I think, even by virtue of the arguments set forth in the memorandum, that the application contained within it a very elemental and very fundamental flaw, in that it provided for the progression of the student should he or she reach the 25th percentile, having not reached Level 3 under the FCAT. That, by everybody's admission, is completely outside of state law. It's an absolute requirement that you get to the 51st percentile. And so, what we rejected, among many, we rejected this application on that basis, the school board did, at the ...
Was there evidence taken at this board below, statewide board?
The school board?
No, at the level, the appeal level.
No, I don't know how you would characterize it. I mean, the attorney was speaking, and then the board started asking questions of the applicant. And so, the applicant did respond repeatedly, and much of that is actually contained within our brief. In my view, the legal counsel for the commission didn't do his job. I mean, he allowed the thing to turn into basically a circus. And we were doing everything we could to respond to their position, but the reality was that the school board had already made its decision, and we were there to support their position based on the record that had been created and was being brought to that appeals commission level. Then, at the state board, to compound the problems, because the 25th percentile was so clearly on its face a problem for this application.
Didn't they, didn't they basically concede that that was just a mistake, and that they meant to put in 51 or some other number?
Well, I would respond two ways.
Didn't they basically say that?
No. I would respond two ways. No, three ways, actually. Number one, no, they did not do that at the proper level, which was the school board hearing. Number two, they did raise that at the commission level, but they took opposing positions all within the same transcript. And you can find that in our brief, where at first they said, "Yes, that is the level by which we're going to allow progression," and then later said, "No, we've decided that's not the level, because it became very clear it was a problem."
So, the first time that they conceded error was at the second level, not the first?
Absolutely. And then, at the state board level, as I was about to indicate, to compound the problem, the state board, recognizing that it was such a serious problem, called forward Mrs. McGugle, who was the chairperson of the commission, and asked her to provide testimony in effect that, in fact, the 25th percentile was abandoned. And she stated on the record that she had admonished the applicant not to use the 25th percentile, but in fact, she had not admonished them. I mean, she did raise some questions about it. She certainly said that this is a serious problem, and it was swept under the rug, so to speak, by just essentially saying, "Well, you know, now we've decided it's a typographical error."
Well, the ultimate decision was that even if they assumed that it was the 25th percentile, that wasn't sufficient to constitute a basis for denial, basically was the ultimate decision, right?
The state board's position?
I mean, they said, "Yes, okay, even if it's 25th percentile, that one thing alone doesn't constitute a sufficient basis for denial."
Well, they addressed it in total, but they certainly took that position. But here's the point on that. The commission uses a form, in effect, that has been prepared by their legal counsel, so that all the motions are consistent. And the position that both the state board and the commission took was that there was statutory deficiency clearly contained within this application. But at the same time, then, on a second vote, they voted that there was no ...
No, but the ultimate question is, if we, if, you know, for purposes of argument, we say that that was the basis, we didn't think the 25th percentile issue was a sufficient basis for denial, my question to you is, is it a sufficient basis, that in and of itself?
Oh, clearly. I mean, absolutely.
Why couldn't that have been remedied later on in the process, once you got by the, you know, the board and got your permit or your authorization? Why couldn't that have been remedied later? I mean, wasn't there some argument about that?
Well, sure, there is, but that would be like saying, "The next time I'm in front of you, maybe we should all just decide what we could remedy that might have changed something down at the trial court level." I mean, the record is what it is. The school board is the body that is responsible for making this decision. They were presented with specific information that was unrefuted, and that being that the students were going, among many things, that the students were going to be moved forward if they met the 25th percentile. On that basis, the school board made a decision, and that decision then was subject to review, not to negotiation, which is what it turned into, not to a discussion of what it might have been or could have been. And what we said, and what is mentioned in the response brief, is, "Look, you've got a September 1 deadline. This is the fourth time that you filed this application. You can file this application on September 2, and you'll have a whole year to hear and receive our comments and file a new application, because we have 60 days to respond." What was happening is every single time they came forward, the application was different. And the appellate's are trying to assert in their brief that somehow this is about them. It is not about them. It is not about them. What we do is we accept the application as presented. And that application over those four years changed dramatically. For instance, on the accountability side of things, last, the year prior to this, they had, they took the position that if they, that the charter wouldn't be revoked unless they had two F grades as a school in two consecutive years. Then, this particular application didn't address it at all. Now, it's required to address it, as Dr. Colwell pointed out. It's like agreeing to set a speed by measurement at miles per hour, but then not agreeing to any speed limit. And so, what they're saying is, well, sure, everybody's going to be subject to the FCAT A-plus plan, but the question that is required to be answered by statute is, "Well, what is your goal?"
Explain to me how this percentile issue works, especially as it relates to the FCAT, because as I understand it, one of the positions that Terrell took before the state board was, "You could score 20% and be promoted in a public school if you got a 3 on the FCAT. Is that true?"
Yes, you will find the testimony of Dr. Colwell contained within the record. And what it says is that if you reach Level 3, you're fine. If you don't reach Level 3, but you still are in the 51st percentile or higher, you'll pass.
But if you, if you reach 3, you don't have to be even at the 25th percentile?
That's my understanding of it. You don't have to be at the 51st percentile.
I'm sorry?
At the 51st percentile by statute.
You don't even have to be at the 25th percentile. So, the fact that you, that you might promote somebody who had only reached a 25th percentile might be acceptable if they also had to pass the FCAT, correct?
It's outside my area of expertise. I guess theoretically, I understand what you're saying theoretically, but I don't, I don't know.
And I understand what the school presented to the state board was exactly that. We have a 25th percentile rule, but it's coupled with, you've got to get a 3 on the FCAT, so our promotion policy is not less strict than it is in public school, is that correct?
I guess. By virtue of the application, that's what they presented, but ...
Why couldn't the, why couldn't the state board make a determination that that was, in fact, acceptable?
Well, in fact, they didn't. They created a new record that said it was not permissible. They called Mrs. McGugle report to get her to say, "On the record at the state board hearing, the 25th percentile is not applicable, will not be acceptable, is not acceptable, and I admonished them at the commission level, which is at an appeal level, that they can't use that." Well, that's after the fact.
Regardless of the FCAT?
That's right.
So, the school board was taking the position that if the standard was 25th percentile or passed the FCAT, that would be unacceptable, is that correct?
The school board took the position that you must meet the minimum requirements as set by the Florida Administrative Code, the Department of Education, and Florida statutes.
If you were in a public school, and you passed the FCAT, and were at the 25th percentile, would you be promoted?
You're back to the same hypothetical, but I don't have the expertise to answer.
You don't know? I don't know if that's the case.
Well, you know, hypothetically, I think, I don't know.
So, you don't know whether the standard that the school board was arguing to the state board for this charter school was a higher standard than they were applying in their own public schools, is that what you're telling me?
No. I'm telling you that this charter school applicant was being asked, was being demanded to produce a standard that was identical to state law. And they were promoting the notion that they were going to be below that standard significantly.
I thought you told me the state law standard was, if you got the 3 on the FCAT, you got promoted, even if you didn't get to 51%, correct?
That's my understanding is.
So, it sounds to me like that this proposed standard from the charter school may have been higher than what it would have been required to be promoted in a public school.
No, it's not.
Because if you got a 3, you'd be promoted if you were at the 20th percentile, correct?
It was not. It just wasn't. I mean, there's no way to twist it around. It's a matter of state law. Everyone, on every level, even at the state board, clearly agreed that the 25th percentile was an unacceptable standard, period.
Regardless of whether it was coupled with a passing of ...
Absolutely. That is unrefuted, undisputed, undisputed.
And that's what's required in public school to be promoted?
Right.
But didn't the board basically render its decision based on the concession that the 25th percentile was a mistake, and it was really 51, and isn't everybody basically ...
Well, it wasn't a mistake. I mean, you're ...
I mean, isn't that, I mean, the board, isn't that the basis of the board's ultimate decision, that, "Well, they conceded it was an error. It's supposed to be 51, and therefore, based on that ..."
If you want to throw out ...
Doesn't that basically lock everybody into the 51%?
No. If you want to throw out an entire body of law that sets the structure by which quasi-judicial hearings are reviewed and subsequently are determined, and then subsequently reviewed, under every administrative final agency action, then yes, you can do that, but it becomes a free fall. And the school board made a decision.
What was the basis of, the ultimate basis of the decision of the board in making this decision? They said, well, they said that the 25th percentile was, you know, was inadequate, but it wasn't enough to constitute a denial. Then, I understand that the academy basically conceded, "Well, it was an error. It's supposed to be 51%. We concede that." And then, and then the ruling came from the board, from the commission, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so my question to you is, then, what is the commission's ruling? Isn't the commission's ruling that it's 51%, and that's why we voted the way we did? And aren't they damn ...
Number one, they can't do that. I don't know. And that leads me to another point, which is they've created, irrespective of the fact that the statute requires that they create a factual basis for their decision, so that we can all be discussing this, they didn't do that. And that's another reason for rejecting their position. But, that having been said, the only thing we do have, which is in writing, is that they said it was statutorily deficient. The application statute, statutorily deficient, that's the state board's position. But then they said, "But it wasn't statutory good cause." Now, you all in the UCP case talk about what statutory good cause is, and you basically, basically anything that's legally acceptable. And if that's not, I mean, if you're taking the position that something is statutorily unacceptable, how can it not be good cause for the lowest level quasi-judicial hearing body, the school board, to then say, "Well, based on that, it's good cause to reject this applicant"?
You're down to four and a half minutes, if you want to save it.
Yeah, I want to save it.
Good morning. Appellate's Court. Excuse me. My name is Chris Carlisle. I'm here on behalf of Academy.
I'm confused about these percentile issues, because I'm confused about what the application said and what the academy says it really means, because it seems to me they said a couple of different things at a couple of different times.
I think they did, and I think that the record does reflect that. But I think, you know, I'll attempt to answer your question, but I also think it's a bit of a red herring in this entire process for a couple of reasons. There is divergent points of view on this. The application itself says, as I think you mentioned, should have the same, or the representative at the school board said, that it should have the same standard or a higher standard than any other public school. And the 25%, I think that was supposed to be, the bullet number four said, scoring an FCAT score of 3 or above, which is the state standard. Then, you have the application, or actually, the appeal to the state board that went to the commission first, that says, "Fine. I think that was an error. It should be 51%." Then, you have some discussion at the commission where it kind of goes back and forth, but ultimately, they say, "51% is fine."
Was that the ultimate basis for the decision, 51%?
I think, when, there's no other way to explain the commission's recommendation and the state board's vote, that it was statutorily deficient at 25. However, we don't find it rises to the level of good cause, because there are concessions in the record that say, "Of course we'll do this." But I think that what is so important for this ...
So, what did the academy ultimately say was going to be the standard?
Academy's, I think it was on 702, 802, the record was asked, "Well, in the future," meaning I'm assuming the negotiation process of the actual charter, will 51% be there? And they say, "Sure, that's fine."
So, it's 51% plus a 3 on the FCAT?
That's what I understand.
And is that what the public school standard is?
Judge, I think, again, there's some confusion, and I'm as confused as you are, about whether or not this was higher than the public school, but there was a concession that it would rise at the 51% level. There was a finding by the state commission and the state board that 25 was unacceptable, so I'm assuming that is the law, since they're far more knowledgeable than I about the standards that are in place there. But I think what is critical for this court to think about and understand what we're talking about here. And this is not a game of gotcha. This is not a game where on September 1, or whenever the application is turned in, the law states must be letter perfect, in a typo, or a number, or anything that is unacceptable.
I mean, this was your fourth attempt to get it right, and you shouldn't even do it then. I mean, that's, I mean, I can understand the frustration of the school board in looking at this for the fourth time, and then saying 25%. And then, you go to the next level, and then you make your concession when it appears that you're going to be in some difficulty. But, you know, my ultimate question is, if you made the concession at 51%, and that was the ruling, are you bound by that?
No. And again, it's critical to understand the process.
So, are you saying that you're not bound by, you said that your, the academy's made the concession that ...
Oh, I'm sorry. Are they bound by the 51%?
Are you bound by 51%?
Yes, I thought you meant, "Are you bound by being locked into the 25 that appeared in the application?" I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. This, the whole process of a charter school application, and ultimately, the charter, is in fact a process. This is not a case in federal court where you're bound by your pleadings and et cetera, it's what they want this to be. And you have to understand and look at the statute and see what's involved here. We have a concession from the other side that, yes, they could have extended the deadline. They could have said to them, "You know what? We think there's a typo here or an error. We want you to change it to 51. We'll give you a week to do that." What's the record reflect? When dealing with this applicant, we draw the line in the sand, the data comes in, we don't allow them to change anything.
What, you said, excuse me, you said that there was a negotiation process for the charter?
There is.
Once you get past this, this stage?
Absolutely.
All right. Is the 25th percentile versus 51th percentile included in that negotiation, or is that out once you get past this level?
I would assume, based on this record, that the academy has conceded that point, and therefore, that wouldn't be a point.
But if, but if you went back to the 25, if you went back to your argument that, "Well, we're, you know, we're going to, we're going to do away with our concession. We now want the 25th percentile," would they have the right to deny issuance of the charter based on that, once you get into the negotiation process, or do they have to issue it regardless of that issue?
I think, again, I think that the way the statute reads, you know, at that point, under this version of the statute, there's a six-month period. It's changed to 75 days, I believe. But on any issue like this, there's a mediation process that's set up to the extent the parties can agree. If one side can convince the other, "This is the state standard. Obviously, you have to meet it." I think it would be foolish for anyone to suggest, "We're going to refuse to comply with the state standard." However, if there's debate or confusion about it, then there's a mediation process that's set up. And again, you have to understand, this is after the application comes in, and after the charter is accepted, or the charter application is approved, then we go through the process to negotiate the actual charter itself. And so, the idea of that ...
So, what happens if you go to mediation, and then let's assume that, you know, you're arguing about this 25% versus 51% issue, and the mediation doesn't resolve that issue then what?
Then, the statute provides that it goes to an administrative law judge, and the administrative law judge makes a ruling on that, and prevailing party attorney fees are awarded to the side that loses in that. So, there's a fair amount of incentive for the parties to negotiate in good faith and to get these standards correct. But this entire process you're describing is the heart of this case, and really what this case is about. The school board would like it to be, again, on one date, everything has to be perfect, no exceptions, no negotiation, no nothing. And what happened in this case is that the commission and the state board said, "You know what? That's not the way this process should work." You have comments from the commissioner saying, "In my district, we always, it would be an impossible standard to say that on the day that it's due, it has to be 100% letter perfect." And the way the statute is set up, through the potential for extending the deadline, through this negotiation process, through the mediation process, through ultimately, an administrative process, it's necessary.
And what did you think, though, that after, on your fourth attempt, you've had three attempts before, they've been rejected, wouldn't you think that on your fourth attempt, you would know to get an issue like this 25% issue correct in your, in your fourth application? So, we wouldn't be here discussing it today?
Two answers to that, Your Honor. The process, through many years of things, has been winnowed down to the point where they were extremely minor issues. And it was described by one commissioner as being changing one number and adding one sentence.
You think 25, you think this is, that's a minor issue? I mean, the ...
Again, today, even under, from counsel being up there previously, there seems to be some confusion about it, and whether or not that it was acceptable or not. And so, I would suggest that when push came to shove, and they said, "All right, this is, in fact, the state standard, certainly we will meet that." But to the extent that we have these two incredibly minor things, and that's really what the commission was saying, that when we get to the point where all this work has been done, and the application is in such a form that you're denying it on the basis of one number and the failure to include one sentence, that's not good cause. That's not enough. You admitted that you deal with other applicants in a different way, and you have the ability to give them more time to respond. And we admit that we have the ability to work through these issues. And you're drawing this line in the sand, and that's not good cause, and that's what they said, yes.
Does the record reflect the history of the earlier applications and what was ...
There is, there is, I believe, the transcript and also the final orders from the previous year. And it's relevant, because again, this, you know, frankly, I think it's almost impossible.
My question is, basically, are these defects that they complained about in the fourth application, were they present in earlier applications and were raised as defects and not corrected, or did they not raise them when they were in an earlier application, and when it got to this application, the first time they raised them?
I don't believe the 25 was in the previous applications. There was an issue about school grades in the previous applications that was attempted to be addressed here. And, you know, again, on the flip side ...
On that, I understand their position was, you had to say what grade school you were aiming to get to.
Right.
Is that something that was in earlier applications and got dropped, or was it never ...
There was a discussion in earlier applications with F's. They said, "That's not acceptable." This time, it came back. It didn't put a quote-unquote "goal" in there, although there were many other goals set forth in the application. And they said also, during this process, "Fine. Our goal will be to be an A school. We can include that sentence in this application." Again, this is a, this is a concession that would take two minutes to resolve if they were dealing in good faith. And the commission says they're admitting these things. I think it's also critical for this court to recognize.
I'm still not sure I understand the issue about the 25th percentile. Is that a necessary part of the application, and was it included in the prior applications and rejected, or did it just appear in the fourth application for the first time?
Your Honor, frankly, I don't know specifically on the 25th percentile deal. I don't believe it was that number appeared in the previous applications.
Is it supposed to be in the application? Is it a necessary part of the application?
Again, there's a bit of a discussion. I think there's some confusion on that. There was a point in there about the FCAT score being 3 or above, and then there was the discussion about between 25 and 51, that again, I think even before today, we don't know exactly what the state standard is on that. But there was a concession made, and again, to bog down on this point and say that the Charter School Commission and the State Board of Education, who are the bodies vested with the authority to interpret the statute, to look at this evidence and to determine good cause, were out of line when they said, "Sorry, you have to grant this charter, because these are incredibly minor points." And to punish an applicant and say, "You know what? You should have 51 instead of 25. Try again next year," after you've invested countless hours and countless effort in this process, to get that close, and then have them say, "We're not going to negotiate with you in good faith. We're not going to extend the deadline. We're not going to mediate with you. Too bad. Try it again," is what exactly the State Board of Education, who asked the discretion and the deference should be given to them in this case, said, "It's not acceptable."
Mr. Carlisle, I don't understand why it's a minor point. Explain that to me.
It's minor in the sense that you have the concession, and perhaps a little bit of confusion there, that said that the FCAT score of 3 or above, which is the state standard, is in there. Then, you have this 25 to 51% issue. And again, when they went to the commission, the brief that went to the commission and ultimately, the state board said, "That was an error. We'll make it 51." But again, to accept what this board is, I think, arguing here is to say that your application, as soon as it's turned in, cannot contain any errors whatsoever, be they minor, be they typos, be they something else.
Well, assume it was, indulge me for a second, assume it was a significant error.
Yes.
Should the school board have approved it anyway? The school board sees that it says 25, and it should be 51.
Let's assume ...
Suppose the school board had said, "Oh, well, we just know you're going to get it right eventually. Four tries, and you haven't done it, but we just know it's going to be fine by the time you get through the process. We'll approve it."
Two points on that. Number one, the school board has the ability to extend the deadline for receiving it. The school board could have said, "You know, we appreciate the years of effort you put into this. We find one error in here that doesn't meet the state standard, therefore, we're going to give you a week to change it. If you change it, we'll approve your charter. If you don't, we won't." Very simple process to go through that. Secondly, when the appeal goes to the commission, the commission has the ability to gather information and to clarify information. So, now you have a separate process. Again, the other side would like it to be that this is absolutely onerous, draw the line in the sand.
But when is the role of the school board, then? If the school board, I mean, your argument essentially is that, that a, an application for a charter school that says, "Students who score at or above the 25th percentile on norm reference tests are considered to have demonstrated acceptable student performance standards," where in fact, it's 51%, how can a school board approve such a thing?
Again, Your Honor, I think that they can do exactly what we said and what the process suggests should be done. School boards do go through and do reject charter applications, and those denials are often ...
Is there a limit to the number of times they have a duty to do this? I mean, if this had been the 31st or the 49th, would your argument be the same?
I don't know that it would be the same without knowing the facts to that, but the reality is ...
Assume the facts are exactly the same as they are.
The facts are that the school board takes the position similar to what I'm hearing here. Man, they had all these tries. That's enough. We're drawing the line in the sand. And the bodies on the state level who were charged with uniformity and charged with overseeing this said, "You know what? You're wrong. They got close enough this time." And there's always going to be an error or two, or a minor issue that has to be resolved between the parties. What we're seeing from this record, and what we're seeing happen here, did not rise to the level of denial of the entire charter. We're going to grant the charter, then you can work these minor issues out, because that's the way the process works. And the bodies who were charged with overseeing this process and implementing the statute said that very clearly.
It seems to me, from everything I've heard in your argument, that whether or not you win or lose depends on whether we agree that this was a minor issue.
I disagree, Your Honor. Whether or not we ...
Assume you're wrong. Assume you're wrong, and it wasn't a minor issue. Assume it was a major issue.
Whether or not then, the process, whether or not we've been or lose, is whether or not this Court finds that the State Board and the Commission, who voted unanimously to grant this charter, had substantial incompetent evidence or given the deference to...
Which leads me to the other point, Mr. Carlisle. How in heaven's name is this Court going to determine that? Because we don't have any facts, do we? We have an order that says nothing.
The issue of the order, yeah. There was a, the order references the transcript, and it references the findings made by the Commission and says, these are what we relied upon. And again, the way the Commissioner, or the State Board has done this throughout its history, apparently, including the previous year when the Academy's was rejected, was done in exactly the same form. If the Court saw fit to go back to the State Board and say, fine, I'll...
What happened to findings of fact and conclusions of law in the administrative proceedings?
Your Honor, I'm not the attorney for the State Board, and I did not prepare the order that they filed there. But, you know, again, I think that the State Board's order says, we reviewed the transcript, which is in the record. We reviewed the findings that were made by the Commission, et cetera. And again, a separate issue concerning whether or not the form was acceptable to this Court is somewhat of a separate issue. And if it was remanded to say, we agree with you, however, give us some findings, or go ahead and put those in there, that's one issue. I would argue that that's the way it's been done. It's the way it's done the previous year.
Did the appellate ask the Board below to do it when the order was issued? Was there any motion for rehearing or reconsideration where they said this order is inadequate? It doesn't have facts or conclusions of law, so please give us a detailed order so the Court of Appeal has a better chance of doing it.
I don't believe so, Your Honor. And again, as I mentioned, the previous year, when the State Board issued a virtually identical order denying Academy's charter, obviously, it wasn't an issue to them then. It wasn't an issue below now. The issue that there was testimony given, et cetera, at the Commission hearing that was unacceptable, was not objected to at that time. So there's a lot of labor issues here that are raised. But the key and the core of this case is, can the State Board of Education, acting out a recommendation from the Charter School Commission, say that even though an application is not perfect, we're still going to approve it because we know that no application is ever going to be completely perfect? And the process is in place...
But I'm still confused as to what is to be required to be put in an application. What is the application? I mean, it would seem to me that if you're going to apply for a charter school, there are certain standards that a charter school has to meet.
Absolutely.
And so one of the standards, I would think, established by the state is whether a student is going to be able to pass, if they're in the twenty-fifth percentile as opposed to the fifty-first percentile. It seems to me to be a pretty important standard. Is that required to be put in the application? And if it was required to be put in the application, why did it take you four tries to do it? And even on the fourth try, you didn't get it right?
Your Honor, again, I don't, I can't answer that question. I don't know why they didn't get it right.
What's supposed to be put in the application?
There are incredibly long litany of things that are required to be put in the application. And again, it was over three hundred days.
Is the standard to promote students one of those items that's supposed to be included in the application?
I would believe so, yes.
Is the twenty-fifth versus fifty, is the issue that we're talking about, and you know the issue I'm referring to, is that one of the standards that has to be met in order to promote a student from one grade to another?
Well, I will agree with opposing counsel's answer. I don't know. Again, Judge Ballmer asked questions of opposing counsel, who's the school board attorney. He said, I believe that you can be promoted if you pass on the FCAT. However, then we get back to the question of why did the Commission say that we don't find this a statutorily acceptable, and fifty-one percent is?
Well, then the standard would be twenty-five percent plus a three or more on the FCAT would be the standard. Your standard is just twenty-five percent.
Your Honor, again...
How can that be in a...
It's not a tough case. The application says, bullet number four, and I'm reading and quoting from the transcript before the school board, not the Commission, where the representative Academy said, quote, "And the twenty-five percent, comma, I think that was supposed to be dash, the bullet number four said, comma, scoring an FCAT score of three or above, which is the state's standard." That's the testimony that was given to the school board, not secondarily given to the Commission. But again, the entire point is, let's assume that twenty-five was wrong. They go to the Commission, which can clarify information, and say, we'll change it. We agree. We will change it. And the Commission, who has the body that decides this, and the State Board said, we're not going to punish and draw a line in the sand when they're conceding that they will change this one point. The process shouldn't work that way. I don't care if they had three tries previously. I don't care if this is their first application. In these circumstances, given an otherwise acceptable application, we're not going to the private community of a needed charter school because they had twenty-five instead of fifty-one. And that's the body that had these discretion and the ability to make that call. They said it's not good cause.
Your position is now that going through this entire process, that your concession before the Commission is sufficient to bind you to the fifty-one percent, and therefore, there's no need to go back and do it again?
Yes.
Would you have the ability, if we say that, you know, it was inappropriate for the Commission to rule in accordance with the, you know, with the recommendation that the charter be granted, would you be able to go back, file another application, and go through the process again? And this time in the application, put in the correct number, fifty-one as opposed to twenty-five? Would you be able, I mean, are you, are you into the process, or can you, if we rule against you in this case, can you go back and do it again?
I assume we can, Your Honor. But the whole point is, there was an appeal taken to the State Board, and the two bodies there that decided this issue said that there was not good cause to deny this. And so instead of going down that road, there's been a tremendous amount of effort and time spent going down this road. And that can be addressed in the negotiation process of the actual charter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, would you address the issue, because I know it was raised in the proceedings, that there was a concession of fifty-one percent, they made a mistake, and there was argument or an issue raised, that even if it wasn't, that is an issue that can be resolved in the negotiation process in determining whether the final charter is going to be issued? Is that correct?
That is not correct. Whatever's in the application is what we would be bound to do in the ultimate contract negotiations. Let me make something perfectly clear.
What are you negotiating, then, when you go through the negotiation process?
Well, you're negotiating the finer points of the contract, but that would be an established position. That's why you have an application process. Otherwise, why have an application? Let's just go straight to negotiating the contract.
So you're saying that when you go into the negotiation process, that, you know, this issue would not be part of that?
No, because it would be established in the application. Let me make sure you understand this. It's in the record clearly. Sixty-seven percent of this application was a failure. The school board unilaterally takes the position that if you don't meet the minimum standards, we will grant you provisional status in certain areas. This is all determined in response to your question by a rubric that is created by the Department of Education. It sets forth the various areas, finance, accountability design, you know, corporate structure, et cetera, et cetera. Sixty-seven percent of it was rated either a one or a two. Two of those were ones. And that is the only basis upon which we reject this. He's trying to suggest it's anything but just a slightly perfect application. Sixty-seven percent of this application, according to us, did not meet the minimum requirements. We just allowed them, under twelve other categories, to come and talk to us provisionally about those changes. This is essential, and let me point out, your hypothetical is wrong. The, I determined while I was sitting there, through the right source, that a three could not be a twenty-five percent under any circumstances. A three is a seventy-five percent. So your hypothetical, Your Honor, could never be met. And this twenty-five percentile would have suggested that a student would go through a progression under their scenario in this charter school, which they say is a needed charter school. Well, what we need are quality charter schools, and we're suggesting this application clearly indicates this is not going to be a quality charter school.
Was that evidence presented to the State Board in response to the argument that a twenty-five percent would, twenty percent would be acceptable in a public school if they got a three on the FCAT?
Yeah. It was presented to the Commission. That's why the whole issue came up, and then they tried to change their position. And let me remind this Court, and you can look right in our memo, their first position was, yes, twenty-five percent is the criteria that we're going to use for progression, and they only...
Is that, I ask opposing counsel, and I'm still not sure that I'm clear about this. You have an application that you have to file, and I'm still a bit confused as to what you have to put in the application in terms of the standard to promote a student from one grade to another. And so I ask opposing counsel, I mean, is the issue that we're talking about, the twenty-five versus the fifty-one percentile issue, is that something that's supposed to be addressed in the application?
Absolutely. You have to, by statute and by rubric, you have to establish what the standards are going to be for promotion to the next grade. You also have to establish what the goals are. Let's not forget, there's a lot of other issues here. They did not establish any goals, contrary to the statute. They also did not meet the financial prerequisites. We determined, as a matter of fact, that they had overstated the revenue by nine hundred thousand dollars, and their capital improvement was underfunded by one point two million dollars, and that was another basis for the rejection.
Let me ask you a hypothetical. Somebody files an application. Let's say it's a first-time application. And everything is acceptable in it except for one thing. Let's say they don't include what their goal is for what kind of school they're going to be. So the school board says, it's unacceptable. We're rejecting you because you don't include what your school's going to be. And at the school board level, they say, okay, we'll add a sentence and say, we want to be an A school. And the school board said, sorry, it's not in the application. Go away. Come back next year. And they take an appeal. Would it be improper for the State Board to say that wasn't good cause, it was easily correctable? Or is it your position that if it's not a hundred percent correct, the school board has the absolute right to say, go away, come back next year? You got no right to get it overturned at the State Board level?
I'll answer the hypothetical, but it has no bearing on this case, because it has, those are not the facts of this case. But the answer is yes. It would be absolutely appropriate for the school board to reject that application even under those circumstances. The reason is, because what they're not telling you is that we give them notification based on our rubric review weeks in advance of the school board hearing, exactly what our concerns are, all of which was, all of this which was contained in that. They did not address any of this before the school board. They waited till the appellate commission to start talking about, well, you know, maybe we didn't really mean that. Now, you know, we've got an argument here that we're never going to get to, obviously, that this whole thing is unconstitutional.
You'll have to rely on your brief for that, because you're...
You'll have to rely on your brief, but let me just make this point. What you're suggesting up here, if you do not follow what clearly has been the established law by the Supreme Court in the Noble case, that deference must be given to the original quasi-judicial body, the school board. What you're suggesting, if you allow them to start negotiating this process on the appellate review level, and change their application, and change the facts, and say, well, it's only minor, what you're suggesting is that this will play a role.
Not only are you over time, but you're into rebuttal, and the other side never addressed the constitutional issue on their presentation, so it's improper for rebuttals.
Well, I'm not suggesting the, I've got a minute and forty-five seconds.
No, you're one minute and forty-five over your time, sir. Your time's up. Thank you.